Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Friday, November 8th Planning Board Work Session. Here to talk today about lighting. Thanks, everybody, for coming early on a Friday. Thanks, Adam, for getting things set up after a long day yesterday for you. And just a reminder, too, we are recording, just for posterity. And to make it easy for the minute taker. All right. So I think everyone has a copy of the sort of starting point. That where I think everyone is up to date on what the request is. I think everyone here was at the meeting for the presentation. Was there anybody who wasn't here? I think everyone's at least same level playing field. Okay. So what has been requested by the college, then, is to consider lighting on the field. And so, as you know, the zoning ordinance does not accommodate that currently. So we need to decide whether or not we are going to propose some changes. So we have about the next month to work on that and work with the college neighbors, come up with a proposal that hopefully works for all parties, and then decide at our December, I think it's like the 11th meeting, 10th, whether we move it forward to public hearing in January, at which time we have one or two public hearings, and then onward to town meeting for vote on the ballot on Town Meeting Day. So, as you can see, the sort of first draft of things for us to consider, very much a starting point on things to give us some discussion, has it being added into the Institutional Recreational Zone. The Institutional Recreational Zone is comprised wholly of Kelsey Field with a buffer around the perimeter of the field, which I'm not entirely sure of the history of that. I assume it was to provide a little bit of a buffer to neighbors so that the recreational activities wouldn't go right up to the property lines. But it has existed for quite a while, so I'm not quite sure. But we can, just so that everyone is familiar with. So you can see how the buffer sort of goes around, with the exception of on the Siemens Road side of things. So, in order to do that, there is a section under accessory uses that exists today where we would need to add field lighting to the accessory use list, as well as remove the unlighted access roadways and gravel parking areas. I think the discussion has been that if you're going to be encouraging folks to be down there at night and after hours for field events, safe passage back to campus is something that would be important in crossing Siemens Road. Do, how, I guess, Tim, looking for, how do we want to do this? Do we want to talk about these things individually as we go? Or, okay. Okay. So are there any thoughts on that section there? Number three, uses permitted?
Adam, where are you?
Can you just use the microphone?
Is that okay?
Yes. Yep. Under the Institutional Recreation Zone.
Okay. And you're now focusing on number three?
Correct. Accessory uses.
Where the daytime use and all that has been redacted, so to speak.
Correct. With the addition of the field lighting as an accessory use.
Yes, the field lighting.
Adam, a suggestion that, under three, that you say that it needs to be dark sky compliant, I would add at the time of installation, since those standards, over time, will probably change.
Paul, are you under lighting requirements, number three, under field lighting and purpose?
Yes.
Okay.
It just says it has to be dark sky compliant. I don't think that it makes sense to say it has to be amended or changed each time that.
Yeah, I know. Okay.
There's some change to those standards.
Okay. Before we jump to that spot, though, on the page before, can we just?
Sorry?
The number three there.
Field lighting, the accessory uses. The question was about the pathway lighting or the walk lighting.
And adding the accessory. Is everyone comfortable with how that is? Okay. So it's number two, Institutional Recreational, A uses permitted, three paragraph. So removing the unlighted access, or removing unlighted before access roadways and removing unlighted before parking and turnaround areas, and then the restricted to daytime use only, and then adding in the field lighting. Sure. I think, is it kind of public participate?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
We just have to get it on the microphone.
If you guys want to just hold the microphone and pass it, I think that's fine.
So you don't have to sit, you don't have to stand then. But that way, we can get it in the recording.
You've got to turn it on.
Turn it on, John. No, you don't have to hold it. Just press it once till it goes green. It's still not green.
Now, yeah, there we go. Sorry. First of all, thank you for inviting us to participate with you. I appreciate it. And I also want to, again, thank all of you and all the volunteer work you do and showing up for 7:30 meetings. I really do appreciate it as a member of the town. On this one, the only thing I had a circle on is, first of all, the word "equipment" is capitalized. So is that a term of art?
There is a definition, I believe, for equipment in the zoning ordinance.
Okay. And I just wondered about removing the restriction on daytime use any of equipment. Why would equipment need to be used at night? What kind of equipment? And I apologize, because I don't have the definition of equipment, I guess.
Just to, just to riff on that, it would seem like if you're using the facility at night, then you would use whatever. I mean, you're not going to do mowing or something like that, right? Because that doesn't make sense, especially for a turf field. But if you're using, you know, some sort of, I can't even think what they're called. It's too early. But the little things you can drive around to.
Gator.
Gator, thank you. To like, remove equipment from the field or something like that. Like, that's kind of part and parcel with just having an event, I'm guessing. Right?
Yeah, you only use that with.
Just use, just pass the mic.
For the turf, but specifically the, it would be set up for, and the gator would be used probably just for any type of.
Yeah, sorry.
Any type of athletic training, equipment, water, you know, any sports information stuff, but nothing, no large equipment, essentially.
Right. And, I mean, truthfully, I was looking at it from the security vehicles and maintenance equipment, assuming that campus security would be down there. From the context of our equipment definition, I don't think the gators would necessarily fall into it. It's fairly specific. In backhoes, bucket loaders, excavators, skid steers, bulldozers, graders, self-propelled compaction devices, cranes, booms, scrapers, and pans used in site preparation of road construction, skitters, shears, poultry chippers, firewood processors, portable sawmills, farm and agricultural implements are excluded from this definition. So I think from the equipment standpoint, it's maybe irrelevant. I don't think they're probably going to be taking on. But I think from the security side of things, it's probably. Yep. That's a good question. Thanks, John. So are folks comfortable with that? Yep. Great. All right. So moving on to the field lighting portion, we have the, "The purpose of this amendment is to seek to permit field lighting at Kelsey Field, Colby Sur College, while ensuring compliance with the dark sky standards and minimizing the impact on surrounding neighborhoods." We have some definitions there. And I will say there, I did originally have a definition for non-athletic events. I took out the language for non-athletic events and forgot to remove the definition. But "Field lighting is artificial lighting specifically designed for athletic events, dark sky compliant lights, lighting fixtures designed to minimize light pollution, directing illumination downward and reducing glare." Do we, I had one question there. Do we need to say, like where we did elsewhere, in terms of, as per the dark sky, whatever it's called? The NGO? International Dark Sky?
Yeah.
Sure. Because I feel like for the definition, it makes sense. International, that's one word that's weird. Yep. So we can add that at the end. Anything else in definitions yet? Okay. For the lighting requirements, "Field lighting and lighting on access roads and parking areas shall be allowed at Kelsey Field within the Institutional Recreational Zone. All lighting must be dark sky compliant, meaning the most current dark sky and energy efficient measures as specified by the International Dark Sky Association. Lighting installations must include technology that allows for dimming and automated shut-off."
Can we interrupt here? I think, excuse me, I think Paul's comments are dovetails with mine. Would the town require ongoing technical improvements as the standards change? Or is it going to be grandfathered at the time in terms of the technological status at the time of installation? So I think it's a question we need to discuss.
Yeah, I think it would, to me, it would seem unreasonable to say if the standards changed two years after the installation that they would have to rip out all this new stuff and, you know.
Well, I don't know about rip out, but modify.
Right. That's being probably overly dramatic on that. But I guess the idea is, would they have to make, but it may, I don't know enough about that, but it could require that they would replace the lights themselves, which essentially would be, you know, costly. So, yeah.
And I think it's important to note, as Paul said, either at the time of installation or that they need to maintain a technical standard at, you know, ongoing.
Yep. So if we begin that sentence with, add in, "At the time of installation, all lighting must be dark sky compliant, meaning the most current dark sky and energy efficiency measures as specified by the IDSA." I think that makes sense to, you know, and I guess there's a, you could have a discussion around whether there's some sort of, I don't know, period after which you would have to reevaluate. But that seems, again, that seems a little bit in the weeds. I don't know if others on the board, one sec, John, but I don't know if others on the board have thoughts.
I think it's reasonable to say a time of installation and ongoing. If the, if it turns out that it's intrusive compared to the current standards, we can always amend the ordinance. Is that true? Or is that unnecessarily confusing?
I don't fully, I guess, understand what you.
We can leave it for this time, at the time of installation. Hard stop. Later, five years later, 10 years later, if there are standards that are not being met, that they could meet, that really ameliorate the impact of the lights, can the ordinance be adjusted at that time?
I mean, the ordinance can always be adjusted. I don't believe we could go back and require somebody to update without them having come for site plan review. Whatever's approved as their site plan would be what we had the ability to enforce.
Right. In other words, it's grandfathered, despite whatever technological improvements there may be going forward.
Sure.
Way of thinking about it, anyway.
Yep. And as lighting technology evolved, if they needed to replace fixtures and they were to come back to the planning board, they would be held to the standard current to that time. Oh, sorry, John. Yeah.
Just, I was thinking that if you said, "At the time of installation" or modification, so there would be more like a code requirement. And if they did a modification to something, they would then, at that time, have to have that modification be compliant with whatever the standard is at that time. Because I agree, they can't, you can't suddenly say, okay, 10 years later, now they've got to redo it.
Sure.
But if they change it, or add a pole, or do something else.
Right.
It would have to comply with the standards in existence at that time.
Would that be the whole system? Or just that particular modification?
I think, well, you.
I mean, typically, what would trigger site plan review would be the modification and the, whatever's being modified is what would be being looked at. I don't know lighting technology enough to know if you can have multiple technologies tied together or if, you know, you have to maybe. Right. More wholesome. And my concern, my only, I hear your point, John. It's a fair idea. My only concern with modification is we'd have to be really clear what modification is. It can't just be changing a bulb or something like that that would be part of ongoing maintenance versus like, because I wouldn't want ongoing, I wouldn't want a maintenance need like that to trigger a whole new, like, they're not coming for, you know, SPR just for changing a light bulb. And I also don't want it to trigger like a new threshold that they would have to meet.
Maybe we could say something like "system modification", rather than, you know, changing a light bulb.
Can I, can I just weigh in on this? It seems to me we have a situation in which we're making a modification, recognizing the impact, potential impact on the surrounding landowners. And that if we determine, and the town determines in an amendment, that the impact that's involved is not intrusive, I'm not sure that we should take an artificial standard to turn around, even with a new site plan approval, to say, you know, you've got, you have to comply with that. You know, we're making the determination, the town's making the determination, that this use is not intrusive. So it seems to me a high standard. You know, we have site plan modifications that, you know, are not major, and to turn around and say, okay, now you have to make it less intrusive. It almost implies that this is an intrusive use. It shouldn't be approved.
What if, instead of saying a time of installation or modification, we say a time of site plan review? Because a change or a modification is always going to trigger site plan review. A bulb wouldn't. But the standards of the site plan review regulations for what goes forward, if they're going to add a pole light, would take them to site plan and just keep it clean?
Well, I would only say that if they want to put up an equipment building, they have to come for site plan review. I mean, it, my point is, in one way, shape, or form, the town, this board, whoever's, you know, if it goes through, are saying, this is not so intrusive as that we should prohibit the use.
So if we say, "At the time of site plan review, any proposed lighting must be dark sky compliant", so if they're doing a building that's not, that's, doesn't have any impact to the lights?
I don't know. I'm just giving my input. I'm not, I'm saying, I think, once you determine that it's not so intrusive, it's not a nuisance. Why do you have to reduce?
I guess, I would say that, I would say that perhaps it is a nuisance, not in a, in a, in a way that is, that it's so much so that it shouldn't be allowed, but that if you could make it better in the future, if you were to come back for SPR, then it feels like that would be the time to trigger that, rather than.
Paul, it sounds like you're arguing that if a new standard is possible, we would be, depending on the modification, we would saying to the institution it needs to meet the current standards, when before, we had found that they met the standards at the time. However, excuse me, to Tim's point, if there are better technologies out there, and it could make it even better at the time of site review, if that were something that they could adopt, we would encourage that. And in fact.
Well, I would just say that if you put it in like that, it means you can demand it. And it could be very expensive. It doesn't seem like something that we normally do, is saying, you know, you've, maybe if it's a gas station, maybe we say, you know, you have to always, but, I mean, this is a not surprising use of.
Lights.
You know, we don't say to everybody that if there's an improvement in your, in the septic technology, you got to go in and put in a new septic.
Right. But your septic tank isn't necessarily intruding on the neighborhoods.
It could, very significantly.
Yeah, it could.
Well, yeah. Well, the thing is, there would be essentially codes establishing the need to replace or improve or repair the septic tank.
So I want to, another example, though, is, right? So I do sidewalk projects all the time. A sidewalk can be non-ADA compliant in existing. We are not required to update it, but as soon as we touch it, it has to make code.
Right.
So like, there are cases, and that's a very good one, that it's a potentially public safety thing, but it's unrealistic to expect the towns can afford to replace every sidewalk every time a new standard comes. So although I agree that, and I want to also warn, like, as we go round and round, I know I'm not technical savvy in lighting, and I'm guessing most people here are. So like, when we get into the, like, words system or whatever, like, I don't know that they don't have necessarily a meaning that we don't fully comprehend. So that was my only thought with that one. But I, it does make me wonder if, I agree, there's got to be some sort of way to say, one, yes, if any new lights are installed, they can't meet the current design of the rest of the lights. I agree. They have to meet the design at the time of. But saying, I do worry with the site, site review, because, right, it's a gray area. It feels too gray to me, I guess, is the point. Because it might not directly impact those lights.
But I think what I heard Adam say was, if something was going to be done with the lights, then that would be the expectation. But if it's a, an equipment building that doesn't touch lights in any way, this is not a concern. It's only if something was going to be done with the lights.
Yeah. We didn't want, I don't think anybody intends to, oh, site plan review in the area to trigger some sort of review. That seems, definitely, that seems unreasonable.
Is it okay to be vague in the language? Like, I don't mean vague, but you know what I'm saying? Like, it is a little bit. I don't, I've never written one of these, so I guess it's a question more than a statement.
So, so let me ask Adam, say your proposal again. What would you, what, hearing this, I mean, I don't want us to get lost in this. So what would you suggest there that would, that might suffice that would move us forward? Not to put you on the spot, but. I think we all are kind of feeling around the same thing. I think we all want, like, to be reasonable to the college. We want it to be reasonable to the neighbors. We want to give the college a chance to maintain the system without getting, you know. The last thing we want to do is have maintenance not done or somehow deferred, because they're afraid that it would trigger this broader thing, especially when there's been fundraising to this point. So then you have to go back to someone and say, guess what? We have, you know, we need more money. That's no fun. So if we said, "At the time of site plan review, any proposed lighting must be dark sky compliant, meaning the most current sky, most current dark sky and energy efficiency measures as specified by the IDSA." Any proposed, any.
And? You won't, you don't want to address any modifications or anything? Or are you talking about.
That's inherent.
Be associated with the modifications.
Right. If the modification wouldn't trigger site plan review, then it wouldn't, that, that's the point you're making, that it would be allowed, just as part of maintenance. And maybe we say, "Any newly proposed lighting?" So that, I mean, because the site plan, if you come for your equipment shed, your site plan should be holistic in having all of the lighting that exists, which could be, you know, part of that site plan. So if we say, "Any newly proposed lighting", it at least sort of shrinks that down to whatever lighting that is associated. Equipment building may have some lights on it that need to be dark sky compliant. Right. The only other thing, too, is I wouldn't want a situation where they have to replace, again, I don't, none of us know enough about lighting, it seems, but where they have to replace one component, and then suddenly that is the new standard, and then it looks different from all the others, because it's just one part that would actually call attention to it, make it look worse. So I think if we're, I think your wording covers us there. Okay. But that's one thought I had, too. If, and again, if you had one array or one section of lights that somehow, and based on the videos that we've seen in the PowerPoints, it's smaller than that. But I wouldn't want you to have five of one kind and then one of another.
I don't want to extend this too long. But I think if you say, "At the time any lighting is installed, it, what's being installed has to be compliant", you've already done what we're trying to get our lips around here.
The thing is, Tim, with your example, it sounds like you're saying, gee whiz, if they've got five lights that were installed in 2025, and then they come back and install a different use and have to install a different segment, the fact that they're different would be a problem for you?
Well, again, I, just thinking of hypotheticals, it seems aesthetically that it wouldn't make sense. But if they're doing a new lighting pole, as an example, that's a different animal. But if they were coming in to replace it, I'm just worried about, I'm concerned about the maintenance part. I don't want that to trip it up. But I think Adam's language would cover us. Do you want to just read that one more time? Sure. "At the time of site plan review, at the time of site plan review, any newly proposed lighting must be dark sky compliant, meaning the most current dark sky and energy efficiency measures as specified by the International Dark Sky Association."
I think if you take out "new lighting", I think that'll apply to everything you're.
Are you, are you worried about, they might be saying anywhere on the campus, rather than the athletic fields, Paul?
No. I'm just saying, we're having, we're going to have a site plan review on this lighting, on any further lighting. So we don't have to say "new lighting".
Okay.
It's implied.
I see what you mean.
Yeah, same thing.
It's really, it really duplicates.
It's a question of, why are you saying "new"? Is there some reason that makes it confusing?
It's okay. Yeah, you wanted to delete "newly proposed", right?
Yeah, newly proposed.
You want to be sure that it's not retroactive to already existing lighting.
That's a good point. To be clear, because this is all under specifically field lighting. No matter what we say, it'll only apply to the field.
That's correct.
And the entry, because the access, because we included that in here, because we specifically talk about that, does that bring that into it, too? Because we said, "Field lighting and lighting on the access road and parking", like, does that bring that into this category? I'm just trying to make sure that, like, with all this talk about, like, the maintenance building, and then there was, like, the lights on the maintenance building, but those wouldn't apply to these regulations, correct?
I think we could maybe change field lighting to facility lighting, and it would be encompassing.
Okay. And is that even, okay, so then, say, if they put a field building, and there was lighting on the building, then it does fall under this? Is that even feasible? I'm just, like, from you guys working with the designer, like, if you put a light on a building, and I know, obviously, you also have funding right now, right, for these. And I don't, I'm guessing this is a pretty big expense. So is it realistic? And I understand from the neighboring standpoint, right? They have a building, suddenly there's a spotlight. Believe me, my neighbor has one, I can, shining right in your house, right? So I understand that. But like, are we also, is, I mean, if you're putting a one-story building with a little light over it, do they then have to have that full, like, bring out the dark sat sky compliant people for final approval? Like, that seems.
They have fixtures, too, that you can just do that are.
That are already under that.
That would be. Yep. And somewhere in their website. And they would do, like, downlighting, like you, like on the fieldhouse you guys built. It's, I mean, you have, I know we don't have parking lot lighting there, but you have safety lighting, right?
Yeah, we build it.
Right.
Without all of the process of.
But that's downcast or, you know.
Right.
All that stuff.
My only concern with changing it to the word "facility" is that really broadens, I think, what we were focusing on, which is really just field lighting right now. I'm not suggesting that we wouldn't put the most updated.
not suggesting that we wouldn't put the most updated lighting in. Anytime we do a new project, we're going to put the top standard in, we're not going to go backwards. But it just seems like we're talking about field lighting, but now we just opened it up to facility. Not 100% opposed to it, I'm just, got to be careful of the ramifications financially down there. And I know the building is new right now, but eventually it won't be.
To your point, I think the definition of field lighting needs to specify what paths and parking are related to this, so that it all comes under the same standard. And to your point, that it's not.
Right, because the definition for field lighting above, excuse me, is artificial lighting specifically designed for athletic events. You can drive a Mack truck through that definition.
My other concern about, about adding facility lighting in this is, while we can have lights that are downcast, I'm not sure they're going to be dark sky certified. I'm not sure whether the dark sky certification applies to building lighting.
I thought I had read that they have ones that are pre-approved, but I might have made that up, so I.
They do, and if somewhere on their website, I was looking last week, there's a whole page of, like, even homeowners can go on and buy dark sky compliant lights.
Yeah, I saw that there, so I'm not.
Maybe check it out next time you're replacing the lights on your house.
Yeah. So, right, so that would be the idea, that it wouldn't trigger, to someone's comment, it wouldn't, like, they won't have to show up for, you know, what, that would be absurd, right? But if you can, one, if you get ones that are already compliant in advance, and then that's off the shelf.
So what if we just changed this to lighting? The section just being lighting?
Instead of field.
Yep. And then, and then it shows lighting requirements. So field lighting and lighting on access roads and parking areas shall be allowed.
I think you've got the definition in the first line as three, you just have to work the, work that together. It defines what areas we're talking about. Access roads and parking areas, you don't want it to include the parking areas up by the rest of the college.
But this is already in the institutional recreational.
Right, you just, the problem is field lighting. It's athletic lighting, which is the field and the access roads, specific access roads and parking areas.
Could that be included in the above definition?
Yes.
You know, the definition under B1, B, yeah, B2?
And so what you're proposing, Mary Ann, is?
Rather than reinvent the wheel in three, in lighting requirements, we define what field lighting is in the definition section, so we don't have to go through the access road. And field lighting would include the access roads, wouldn't it? Or do you think it's necessary to split it out? How do you feel about that, Paul?
I would just propose changing field liking, lighting to athletic lighting on, for, for Kelsey Field. And then define that as artificial lighting, specifically defined for Kelsey Field, athletic events, and related paths and access paths and parking.
So do we want the whole term, though, to be athletic lighting for Kelsey Field?
You could, I think you can pick whatever.
Okay.
Term, but it shouldn't be field liking, lighting, if field is just.
And I think there's, if the name ever changed or something like that, I would keep it just generic to athletic lighting. Because we're still talking about the zones, we're covered there. And then, and you wanted to add something around and, and related parking and access.
Kelsey Field, right.
In the definition.
Right, that's what we're talking about.
Specifically designed to eliminate fields and access ways for athletic events.
Yeah, that's good. I like that.
Adam, what if you just took the first line under lighting requirements and made that the definition, and called it lighting?
I agree with that.
Because I'm not sure it needs to be repeated under lighting requirements.
Right, we can trim that, we can. So she's like, take this part and make that the definition, but I think it accepts. I think we fix the definition for athletic lighting, I think it's the same thing.
Well, but this is saying it's allowed versus this is defining what it is. So the definition section will eventually be removed from this section of the ordinance, and it will go into the beginning of the zoning ordinance, where all of our definitions live.
Yep, good point.
So it'll end up sort of divorced from this.
Sure.
Yeah, so that's fine. Does that work for you guys?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, all right, Adam, do you want to, thank you for the edits, everybody watching this sausage get made. Do you want to read that?
Sure. So first, I'd change this section just to lighting.
Right.
Just be lighting, okay. And then athletic lighting is artificial lighting specifically designed to eliminate fields and accessways for athletic events?
I, I think it'll help if you designate Kelsey Field as part of it.
But that's what, that's what that zone is.
This is, this is the zone, though. It's only for the zone, it's the only thing that's in there.
There are a lot more things in that zone than Kelsey Field.
No. It's one. Kelsey Field is that whole area, it's not just that field that they're talking about, correct? I thought Kelsey Field was the, a broad term for all, all of those field, it's actually fields plural.
It's that whole parcel of land, that parcel that has all the field.
My mistake. I think then we have to limit it to what we're intending to approve.
Right.
To the turf field.
Right.
With the track.
Based on last meet, last time we met on this, I had the impression that we were limiting the installation of lighting to that one field. There's going to be one to the left, there's going to be one to the right, but the lighting is dedicated to that middle field. How do you refer to that middle field?
That's, that's the turf field.
That's the what field?
The turf field.
Turf field. So for us to say Kelsey Field, that includes all three of them.
Right.
Which is not what we're going to be approving.
Well, but zoning ordinances are written on a zone basis, so that would be like picking a single property in a residential zone that's allowed a special use in the, sort of, the middle of a zone.
Okay, that's not my understanding from the last meeting.
But if they, that's true, that they said that, that they wanted to do the turf field only, that's all they're proposing. If they wanted to come back and do another field, or if they put turf on another field, or if they wanted to do something else, they would have to come back for SPR to do another installation. So then, at that point, we can't, I think what Adam is saying, and correct me, Adam, if I'm wrong, you can't sort of do spot zoning within a zone, you have to say it applies to the whole zone. So if we're allowing lighting, we're allowing lighting in the whole place, they're not proposing that, obviously, don't have the money, not like, was it Bowden or some other school that had all the fields? Bowden, Bowden, yeah. Couldn't think of the name of it. So they're not proposing that, but we can't say, right? There's not a way to say that.
I mean, I think in site plan review regulations, you could get into, like, the, the number of lighting fixtures, or, you know, there are ways to sort of restrict that further. I don't know, honestly, it's unique enough that I, I'm not sure enough to give you an answer, I would have to do some research. I think John has some.
No, sorry. John, yeah, please.
Thank you. This discussion is exactly what I think, and some of you may not know my background is as a lawyer, and so I spent a lot of my career dealing with stuff that hits the fan, rather than stuff that's being thought of going forward. And so I think that comment is right about this is a zone, and that's what you're talking about, and that's why I urge you to be as specific as possible, to leave less doubt on what can and cannot be done. The history of this property is that it was originally sold with the college representing at the time, that it had no plans for lighting, and it was sold based on the no lighting provision. And then now we're here talking about lighting, and they're saying they have no plans to light other than the tar, the turf, thank you. And I come from a position of wanting them to succeed. What I don't want, though, is to create a zoning amendment that then winds up being hard to interpret, and then another administration 10 years down the road, or 15 years down the road, comes in and has different plans for what the college wants to do. I think this is your chance to make it very specific, that if this is going to be allowed, these are the terms, and not have to reinterpret it. So whatever you do, I hope it will be very specific.
Yep, that's a fair point, thanks, John. I think we'll have to probably take a pass on that one for now, and do some research, and thinking about that for our next, we can talk about it offline.
Can I ask for a clarification, though? So this is a warrant article, zoning amendment. This is not a site plan review.
Correct.
So a site plan review would be very specific, they're talking about the turf field, that would have to get approved.
But they, this has.
This has to go first.
Correct.
But this is not the place to just say the turf field. This is for the zone.
Correct. I'm not, you know, and I'm not even sure that we could specifically just say the, the turf field in the, the site plan regs. I think we would have to leave it at, you know, is allowed X number of light fixtures, or, you know, something along those lines. You know, and I guess, John, I don't want to put you on the spot, but using your expertise since it's in the room.
But the thing is, Adam, how could we be that specific in a site plan review if the ordinance is broader?
So I think what the ordinance could do is say, no light fixtures within 120 feet of the perimeter, or, you know, something along those lines that sort of creates a setback, so to speak. I don't think that we could get into, unless we wrote setbacks so specific that it, you know, narrowed the window to just be around the, the field. You know, because they might get some donor in five years that completely redesigns the field, and the orientation of the field totally changes, and, you know, that it is, we've said that this plot of land is zoned specially in an institutional manner.
Adam, again, not, not, this may be something that, you know, we should put on, put on the side and fix somehow, but we're in a situation now where there is no lighting allowed. If we go from that standpoint, and say, no lighting will be allowed other than, and somehow define that without trying to get all the words right, is that going to violate the element of the zoning ordinance as opposed to, you know, limiting it only in site plan review? Because I think, I think that will be a major concern of the abutters if we're making a change that applies to the entire zone.
Let me just, so there's a 100-foot buffer built in just by the fact that the zoning for the 100 feet around it is different, that it's whatever the, the neighboring zone happens to be. So naturally, we have a 100-foot buffer. I think maybe the way to handle that is to consider an additional buffer.
I have a thought about that. So remember during the presentation, the Musco rep was talking about what the, the foot candles were at a certain distance, you know, out at the buffer. What if we, instead of, if we talked about lighting so that there was that sort of a measurement of whatever the foot candles are at the buffers, then that would allow for, at some future time, if the college wanted to put additional lights on, it still couldn't exceed that amount of light at the buffer. So that it's still doing what the intent is, is to protect the neighbors from this glare in their windows, but still would allow for something different to happen in the future. If we, if the college ever wanted to do that, and got the money to do that, and all those sorts of things, I think it would still meet the intent.
And so maybe we could work with the, the lighting rep to, to find some, some language to include the, I guess, maybe what's helpful feedback from board and, and everyone hears, what is that distance from the property line that I think is what we should be talking to them about? The one spot I have a little bit of concern with is the access road. Let me just see how close that is to the abutting house. And this may be a spot where we get into defining field lighting, buffering different from accessway lighting?
Because you could, you could do that, and then it would be a different standard. But I think, Laurie, your point about the intent in terms of not letting spillage over to abutters is there, but then if the components change somehow within Kelsey Fields, all three of the fields, then, and, and yet the light intrusion is not growing, then that seems like you're getting what you need out of it, and the neighbors are getting what they need out of it.
I mean, these are not survey qualities, so it's hard to, but it looks like it's about 104 feet from the neighboring property line. I'm trying to think, we do have a semi-recent survey of Kelsey Field, don't we, Karen, from, I think Horizons did that.
I think what Laurie is saying, though, is that to define that setback with respect to light candles, which I, I think would be helpful in this.
Right, and I think we could talk to the, and I'm assuming we could talk to the vendor or somehow, or you could, you know, figuring out a way that this is generally known as a best practice or a standard for at the edge, then as long as they're not exceeding that, then whether the lighting was pathway lighting, driveway lighting, what have you, getting to the parking lot, or the actual field lighting, then the same standard is being met of not having the leakage, which I think what we're all after.
I think we could also discuss maintenance of the natural tree buffer, because obviously right now, that is a huge asset to the safeguarding of the neighbors. Obviously, you know, that's, we're all only one wind event away from that being obliterated, unfortunately. But I think to the extent that we can try to keep that with, you know, mature trees, is beneficial to everybody, so maybe we think about something with that, too. I mean, that could, and trees go a long way, not only on the light, but the, especially the noise.
So is it safe to say we're going to need to work on this?
It's safe to say we're working on this for the next month, but, yeah. So I think, I'm just making my notes.
So we'll talk offline about that, then.
Buffer, both in candela, and.
And then tree buffer.
Tree.
Awesome.
And then, Karen, I'll see if I can pull our Horizons documents, but also maybe just check yours, too, and if we have, I think we have one from the pavilion that shows natural vegetation extend, obviously, we don't want to, you know, write an ordinance that's already not being met in some way, so then we would have surveyed distances and things, too.
That's a good point. Okay. Do we want to try to tackle another part?
Yeah, could, I mean, I know we all, I think we have a couple of commitments that, but if we could try to get through usage schedule in the next 10 to 15 minutes, is that doable?
I think so.
I have a question about that, about the usage schedule. It's limited to Monday through Saturday. Is there any time when you would need it on Sunday?
For the sake of sports med and just providing balance, we try and organize Sunday as a day off. As per the NCAA, we have to provide one day off every seven days when they're in their traditional competition season. So Sunday tends to be the day off, and when our teams play on Sunday, if they have a non-conference game, they play during the day. Nobody wants a, a night game on a Sunday. I can, I can say that confidently. Sunday would, would be a day game, and they have, there have been day games, so.
Okay. Just wanted to make certain that if you wanted to have it on Sunday, it was in there.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
So, yeah, Adam.
Just making myself know real quick, sorry. So I will go down through these three points, but then also propose a modification that I didn't put in here. We've had some conversations in the office, I've chatted with Laura, but I didn't want to change this from what I passed out to you guys last week. So anyways, the first bullet there being that the field lighting may be used for events Monday through Saturday, sunset to 9:00 PM. Second, lighting on access roads and parking areas. Second, lighting on access roads and parking areas may stay on for 15 minutes after field lighting has been turned off. The third, the college required to provide a usage schedule to the town every six months. I think that from a practicality standpoint, perhaps a posting on the website of a calendar of Kelsey Field events.
It's already there.
Okay. And maybe even, you know, though it might seem obvious with the start time of an event, maybe even like a lighting icon or something would be... Not necessarily something we have to put into the ordinance, but something that just, you know, denotes like, this is an event, you can anticipate the lights being on for...
We have a great composite calendar when you go on the athletic...
Yep. We have a great calendar. It's composite. You can pull home, away, times, links, everything is on there. So it would say, men's or field hockey, 7:00 p.m., October 18th. But I'm sure we could somehow throw an icon on there.
Yep.
Yep.
I have a question about that.
Yeah.
The usage schedule is six months forward.
Well, Adam's proposing that we change that and just go based on... Yes, it was forward-looking, but I think Adam's proposing we just go with... In conversations with the college, they have all this information on their website. So rather than giving them the extra burden of having to produce a separate document, they're saying it's all right here, publicly accessible. Is that right, Laura?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So it's looking at that for the next six months.
The only thing... One thing to keep in mind, though, too, is that whether events can change schedules.
Right, right.
So...
Yeah.
But we do post it.
And Charlene, your point was that this was not like a... This is not an audit of all the times that they used it, correct? I see. I just got what you were saying.
Correct.
Okay. This is right.
Going forward, what the next six months are going.
Right. But not... This is not meant to be a reporting requirement, as in, we use field lights X number of times in the last six months. The other thing I would... One question I had had on this was sunset to 9:00 p.m. I didn't know, oftentimes with other wording, we use dusk, only because I didn't know if sunset itself was technically too late or too... Because sunset now is what, like, 2:00 o'clock, it seems? So like, I just worry a little bit about... I didn't know if dusk was a better... I don't know if that's too ill-defined, because sunset is a specific time, so that was a question I had.
Dusk is a scientific and readily understood measure.
I just know we've used dusk, and to me, that gives you more leeway to turn the lights on when any practical person would say, turn the lights on, it's too dark to see the ball.
Right.
Right.
I think that's important, because I... Having utilized lights a lot of times, you know, sunset can be almost the most difficult time.
Right. And that was my only...
Yeah.
So not to pick nits, but I just wanted to see if that, from Adam, if it's reasonable to switch to that.
Yep. I think another point that came up that we should talk about here is the possibility of overtime for games. And so, you know, making some allowance for the, you know, if a game is still going at 9:00 and there's two minutes left on the clock, the lights don't just shut out.
Yeah, for sure. I just figured... So can we... Yeah, so is the dusk thing good for folks? Okay, so we can...
Hey, I may have a suggestion on...
Yeah, I'm sorry, John.
As to when they turn it on, it doesn't seem to really be that important. Why wouldn't it just say they may use their lights until 9:00 p.m.?
Well, the trouble then becomes, just as you mentioned, overtime. Is there any chance?
No, no, no. But he's saying, on the front end.
Oh, on the front end, yeah. I don't think that it's necessary. But if you think it is, dusk is scientific.
That was... I got hung up on that, but John makes a wiser point that perhaps we don't need to worry about the front end at all, right? Is that...
I also have a question, and maybe this is also for you guys. Safety-wise, I just... I'm seeing this 15 minutes. I am a woman who's been in college. How... My concern, I guess, is, say they're finding that there are safety problems, this is in here, it's 15 minutes, that's not a lot of time for groups of college kids to... Which, I mean, obviously, we don't want to encourage them to be hanging out, just to hang out in a place that the neighbors understandably don't want them.
Right.
But safety-wise, I have some concerns with 15 minutes.
Yep, and I... That was one of the questions I was going to get to as well, that if we... Which is, I'm glad you raised it, so there's nothing... This is informal, but I think we should go back to the 9:00 p.m. part and talk about overtime first, and then come to that, if that's good with you. So...
Did you have... I mean, I guess, how long does overtime... I guess having some input from you, Jen, would be helpful on that.
I think the best way would to be, say, till end of competition, because that literally it takes the vagueness out of it, and the end of the competition would be the end of the overtime. There's no... It's end of competition. Some sports, like soccer, they don't have overtime in the general season, right? It ends in a tie. So end of competition kind of eliminates...
So then the only concern on that part?
Keep the nine. Keep the nine.
Yeah.
9:00 p.m. or the end of competition.
Or end of competition.
Right. So that... Yeah, I was going to say, because you need to have something, because otherwise, if competition ended at 11, then the neighbors are losing their minds, right? So I think the trick would be, though, that if end of competition could win out every time, then the nine would essentially be null, right?
Right.
Because that's the only concern. So it would need to be such that...
Karen had one for that.
What if we just said nine or till the end of extended competition? So that would specify it's only in a situation where it's overtime.
What if we just said nine or the end of competition, whichever is later?
Well, but the only problem with end of... I think the concern I have with end of competition is, and I don't think there's any ill-intent, obviously, on the part of the college, of course, but I mean, I just think, and I'm seeing John nod his head, that you don't want to set it up where you start a game...
Competition just gets over at 10.
You start a game at, you know, 8:00 o'clock, and then it always gets over at 10, because you just started at 8, as an example. So we need to make it clear that it's an exception, like it's a rare event, being overtime, rather than the normal schedule, the normal course of...
So what if you leave nine and say, or the end of the competition in the case of overtime? Or something like that? Because then it specifies that that's really what it is.
I think that would... To me, that seems... I don't... To me, that seems... Go ahead.
It seems to me that we might want to address the starting time for competition, which I think would alleviate... I mean, people are going to say, you know, if it goes over three hours. But I don't know if you can say, no competitions will start after 6:00 o'clock.
Seven is reasonable. So when we look at, we have officials that we're trying to pull in for certain sports, and we're in a rural area, so we already have a very... We don't have a lot to choose from, or the conference doesn't. I would say seven would be the latest a competition would start under the turf lights. Number one for the wellness of our student athletes and their balance and their lifestyle and studying, but we're under the lights. It's between six and seven.
I think, you know, pick the time, but I think that helps to address the issue of how long it's going to run over.
So what if we... I don't know, this is kind of hard to see up here. I don't know if anyone can actually read it. But if we add in a bullet that, you know, also thinking that there could be an injury or something that substantially delays a game that doesn't actually go into overtime, but has you past 9:00 o'clock. So if we said, in the event of a delay of game or a competition goes into overtime, lighting may remain on until the end of competition. Is that fair? Sort of saying it's extenuating?
I think it'll help to sell it if we say, you're not going to schedule starts after a certain time.
And they're okay with that? So if we said seven, you're good with that?
Is there ever a game that doesn't last a very long time, and so starting at seven would still be reasonable? I mean, how long do... I don't know. How long do hockey games go? Not having field hockey on there? Could you use the mic, please? We've got to get it on tape.
Yeah, I was just waiting here.
She said an hour and 45 minutes to two hours.
Sorry. Hour 45 minutes, two hours. Standard competition time for soccer and field hockey.
If you said that they would schedule games with, however you want to phrase it, but with the good faith intent, that it is intended that games will be scheduled to be completed by nine? And so that's up to them, then? It's not seven, it's not six. It's whatever they want within reason, but the game is expected to be done by nine, barring overtime or unexpected delay.
Right.
I had asked, Adam, sorry, is that... That's enforceable in terms of... I hear your point, John, about like, sort of with proper intent or good intent or something like that. I didn't know. Number is easier for us, but I hear your point. We don't want to box them in unnecessarily either.
Yeah, because it's going to be different events, and things can happen. And, you know, I'm trying to look at this reasonably, and it requires some good faith on their part as well, but they know when a game should end. And if it starts out, we start getting games that are consistently ending at 9:30 or 10, then you go to the town and you say, hey, you know? And then the town says, hey, back to the college, don't do that. Or actually, I would call it college directly, but...
Many do.
The benefit of a small town. Yeah, I mean, I think...
Yeah, I mean, I think, obviously, it's a softer enforcement. It's not, you know, as easy to be able to say... You started this at 7:05, and it was at 7:00. That being said, if... I think it's one of those things that if it's repeatedly going past nine, a conversation starts between the town and the college saying, hey, you know, maybe your start times are not working here. You're supposed to be, you know, we're seeing a trend where you're, you know, always going 10 minutes after the time. As for how to word that...
So that they may be completed in a...
Are you trying to avoid specifying a time?
Yeah, we're thinking that, to John's point, which I want to give the college flexibility, I think that they're obviously honest partners here, and I think they would... I don't anticipate honestly any issues, but if we... To say something around the idea that events will be scheduled at times so that they would most likely be completed before the... Before 9:00 p.m. or something like that.
And part of me thinks it's already taken care of, in that the field lighting is to be used for events until 9:00 p.m. And we've then provided the specificity of only for delay of game or competition and overtime. So I think that's sort of inherent that you've got to make it work. You've got 9:00 o'clock.
I think we're getting into the weeds if we're talking about starting times and things like that. We're all big girls and boys, we can figure this out. I think if we've got an end time, you guys are going to work around it.
Okay. And I think that the only concern was, again, going back, was the idea that... Well, it's fine. Let's just move on.
As far as the time, the sort of staggered time on access lighting, I mean, I guess I'm going to look to the college for, you know, your experience for how long does it take to usher people... Obviously, you don't have night games right now, but from a typical afternoon game, they may linger a little bit longer if it's a nice afternoon and there's, you know, food and stuff down there that they're hanging out. But what do you think is reasonable? So if they... Because I'm thinking it's been time in the fieldhouse, right? I would think like 30 or 45 minutes or something.
I think there'll be a difference between the lights that are on the field and the lights that are on the access road. So I think it's reasonable to say that the lights should go off 15 minutes after play, but then, I don't know. I don't know how long in the access road. 30 minutes? To clear people out of there?
So that's including... That's, I'm assuming, people using the fieldhouse that we all met in before, whatever the term there is, but using that facility, changing, cleaning up whatever family picnic stuff is there, and then getting out?
I would just feel more confident with 45, just because we do have a lot of grandparents that come to games that have disabilities. You know, when we're parking down there, just making sure, obviously, everybody's safely getting out, and then the students walking back up or driving back up to campus. That would just make me feel better for safety.
And this is a staggered situation, so that the field lights would have already gone off.
Yeah, field lights off, but just ensuring safety, like you were talking about, that that would just make me feel better in general. And we'll be clearing people out, that's...
Right. But then it's less intrusive anyway, in this last 45-minute segment, in theory.
Yes.
Got the lights already off, and then you're just going to get people changed, get people cleaned up, get grandparents out.
Safely get them out, yeah.
I have a question before we go to...
Hang on one. Erin, can you go to Erin first?
The other thing I just know is discussed in other lighting sections that we have is this idea of safety lighting. So if this comes up, I... We don't have to discuss it now, but I want that to be in the back of people's minds, is there's like a different... Sometimes there's a different level of lighting, which might be appropriate in a case like this, if it comes up. So that way, there's the safety element, but not full. So just something to think about.
And I know at one point, I don't remember what, where, or when the discussion was, but of not wanting to encourage people to be down there after hours anyways, so I don't think the intention is ever to, you know, have lighting on all the time.
I have a question. Do you need the field lighting to augment the access lights, or are they sufficient?
Well, the field lighting's going to be on 15 minutes after end of play, so that's enough time for people to clean the field, I'm guessing.
Is that... I mean, is that enough time, Jen?
It also dims. So there's dimmer on these LED lights, there's dimmer settings, so it will go from game lighting to cleanup or dimmer. There's certain percentages of the dimming, like Alan spoke about, so...
So maybe if we get some of those numbers more concrete, because, I mean, 15 minutes after a game seems a little quick for, you know, if there's a celebration, it's a championship, and they're taking pictures, and you're doing like some sort of a ceremony. I mean, 15 minutes goes fast, and that, trying to get everyone off, and the athletic trainers cleaning up their stuff, and...
Yeah, they can dim and still be safe right after the game, so we could, boom, start to dim them, and then even if we kept the dimmers on for 30 minutes, just to make sure everybody's... You know, our sports information are clearing their equipment off, but we usually move pretty quick, so...
Are you saying that the 60 minutes is not required?
60 minutes, sorry.
Where did that come from?
It says field lighting turned off no more than 60 minutes.
Oh, right, later.
That's under number four. That's my question also.
Yeah.
What's magic about 60 minutes? Why does the field lighting need to stay on 60 minutes after the game ends? I just don't understand. I'm just looking for more information about that.
If we made it 15 minutes and then 30 minutes for the access lighting, does that solve the problem? Clear out MetLife Stadium in 45 minutes?
No, I do feel that 15 minutes, again, we can dim, but that might be a little quick just to be safe. But even if we're saying, if we move that to 30 minutes, people are not hanging out in the field, like the kids and our staff. I mean, we work a lot, we're ready, everybody's ready to go. Again, if it's a championship, that's a little bit different. But 30 minutes, I think, is reasonable with the dimmers on, and then obviously, the 45 with safety, just as we're clearing people out. This... We're not going to support any type of after-game event for the night game that the team has. Yeah.
So that's an hour and 15 minutes after the game?
No, I think they're concurrent.
Yeah. No. So 30 minutes tops, getting the field cleared off while the dims.
60 to 30, and then leave the rest of it.
Yeah, and that's jumping down to number four, number two, yeah, and shutdown timing, as Paul and Charlene pointed out.
So I think, Jen, if we can connect with the lighting consultant and talk about the dimming settings and, you know, what 50% looks like, or if it's 60, whatever the magic number is.
Or even just dimming. I don't know if we could just say they're dimming, but we need to specify.
Well, I mean, dimming at 98% is not quite the expectation.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question about one? Can I ask a question about one, just going back to one? Is, is this intended to apply during the summer? I mean, do you see a lot of usage of the lights in the summer? I, I just don't know if that's a big issue with, here's my thought. Everybody's windows are open, everybody's outside during the summer. Should we address the usage of lights in the summer, if it's not important, just as a way to get this through? I'm, I'm thinking noise, lights.
Do you have games in the summer? Isn't the school closed?
The students aren't there in the summer, but we do rent the field space out. We have summer camps that have been here for years now, but they typically don't play that, that late at night. So, and if it's 9:00 o'clock, it's going to be light anyways, we wouldn't be turning on the lights for that, not to mention the electricity usage, so, we don't, I wouldn't foresee us using it in the summer.
But if you were to use it, it's really no different than by the natural light, that they could be down there for.
Yeah, we, we could comply with as written, so it would still have to be off by 9:00 o'clock and all that.
I thought maybe it was something that might be sensitive with the neighbors. You know, that, that we could address beforehand. I'm, I'm not saying, I, I, I think from the board's standpoint, I don't think we care. But I think if the neighbors and the rest of the town comes up and says, well, why are you going to encourage the noise and the activity and everything all summer, because you now have lights? I don't know, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, that's fair. I think we want to try to wrap up soon. Do you want to, do you want to talk, Adam, real quick about what, what you have here, just to sort of, where we're leaving it? Not necessarily finalized, but.
Yeah, no, I mean, definitely not finalized. As far as the list of things that I have that will work together with the consultant to get some more information on, is the buffers, so the candles at the buffer, figuring out the, the natural tree buffer to remain, and then the proper dimming levels. And then, I think we will be sort of leaving off, I'm probably just going to turn this yellow, so we know where we left off, and then. Yeah, I think we, let's just, I mean, we essentially have half a page of content left to get through. So I think if we can do another hour and 15, hour and a half session sometime, I don't think we can do next week because of, or at least not at the same time, because of the police station subcommittee. So let me just open, oh, actually, there's not one on the calendar.
Let me decide.
So we could do same time, same place next Friday morning. I know everyone loves 7:30.
Fun way to end the week.
You guys aren't available, is there a time, are there alternative options? All week?
All week? Okay. The only concern I have about that is just that I don't want to lose too much time in the calendar.
And I'm. I'm on vacation the last week for Thanksgiving, so.
Because then we start to run into Thanksgiving as well, so.
I think that's available.
They're still not here.
What's our agenda next Tuesday?
So, oh.
Honestly, I haven't done it yet, that's my today task. I think we have a few things.
Yeah, that, that, we have a regular planning board meeting that night, so, and then that's what we're trying to figure out if, I think that was what you were asking, Charlene, like, could we address it there? I kind of think these things are better done in work sessions like this, because it's kind of less formal and everybody, I mean, which I appreciate, because I think everyone can just chat and get through stuff.
What time are you guys leaving on the 14th? Oh, okay.
Early.
And we have the housing commission forum the night before, too.
Well, what if we were to do a week from now on the 15th, and you all are, you guys are back on, you said you're back the week of the 18th at some point, right? So, and we can kind of catch up, I'd be happy to talk to you. I mean, none of this is going to be finalized, it's more just, we obviously want your input. Does, does Friday work for the college next Friday?
Are you guys somewhere that we could patch in via Zoom? I will admit, our Zoom capability is a little rough, but at least you would have, I can put you on my computer, and you'll be, at least see me, if that's. For sure.
Yeah, and we can incorporate those, or we could discuss those, I should say, so. But I think just to keep the momentum going, too, it's fresh in our heads, I think if we could do next Friday at the same time.
Tim, I, I just want to ask, is there any chance for a one-hour work session before 6:30 Tuesday night?
On the 12th?
That might be a little tough for me.
It's a good idea, though, because we've done that before, I think, where we just sort of, you know, jump in. Let me just look at my calendar.
I have, I have a 4:00 meeting on Tuesday, so.
Okay, and then plus getting everything set up, but I appreciate that, Charlene, it's a good idea. So, but for now, then, let's plan if it works for folks, and I haven't talked to the others on the board. Does this work next Friday at this time?
Okay.
What's the date?
The 15th. 15th.
Sure.
Is that good for you guys, David and Erin? Okay, so, and Laura, you think you can do that? Okay, I appreciate that. Let's do that again, I think it's great to try to keep the momentum going on these things, and it's still fresh in our heads, and then, John.
While we're here, can we also just put on for the 22nd, and that way, it's on calendars, and then if we.
And that's the week before Thanksgiving, so, or the last Friday, rather, before the week of Thanksgiving, so. I think having that dialed would be great.
And then, if we needed to. Just want to look at the calendars, we would have another, I'll be gone the last week, and I'm sure you all have holiday plans, too. So then, we'd have one more week after that. Technically, for Planning Board, proposed, we don't have to be done by the deadline. We could have a special meeting sometime in December if we needed to. I just think it's the, the, the right thing to do for neighbors to know by the petition deadline, what we are proposing, if they were to want to propose something, so that's what we're going to use for our target, but.
For sure.
We do have a relief valve if we need it.
Give people an option if they feel that we're not getting it right. But I think that then having this successive meeting schedule should help us, give us, as we know, can, the discussions can get very deep very quickly, so, having the time on the calendar is great.
So, we're scheduled for the 15th.
For the next two Fridays, actually.
And then the 22nd.
Correct, yep, so, yeah.
And we may have a couple of very minor, unrelated to this topic, housekeeping things, that we need to just change a definition here and there, sort of thing, that. So, what, we should probably plan to be here the 22nd, whether we are done with the, the field lighting proposal or not.
Yeah, and I think, given the importance of getting this right, I think having the time is good. And then, John, so I think you're going to talk to Adam as well, but I'm happy to chat to both you and Cotton whenever, too. So, if that's helpful. Adam is definitely the, the brains here, but, but. Okay, are there any other questions or comments from the board before we adjourn? And then from the public, anything else that anybody wanted to have top of mind before we go? Okay. Yeah, thanks, thanks for coming, and, yeah, appreciate everybody's input. Thank you.